And the consent agenda, I know we need some corrections for the minutes. Please. On the voting?
Yes, it was, um, consent agenda. It was, so where did you get this? November 13th?
November 13th. Special Business C.
Motion is to reappoint Sally. That was Herman Brigani, but for to reappoint Ms. Herman. Myself is the first and Sally is the second. And then Mrs. Black and Mrs. Herman did not vote with either one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes for November 13th.
Second.
Do I have any other questions? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Can I just ministerial? We usually share that mic and then you'll have to share with Mrs. Black.
That's about the best. You can tell who the new person is on the committee.
Tiverton Prevention Coalition?
Are we going to announce the personnel?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Resignations, Fort Barton Teacher Assistant Kelly Culpa. Appointments, Teacher Assistant Fort Barton Dawn Olivera.
Can I just quickly, I know Kelly has been doing that for a long time and I want to thank her for her time. She did a great job. She was there when I was there. And I'm pleased to see Ms. Olivera, she's also been around in the school system for a long time.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So, that's a great, thank you, Mrs. Culpa, and congratulations.
Kelly will still be with us because she will be a special ed teacher assistant.
Oh, good.
So, she's still in the system.
That's a nice transition then. Okay, thank you. Tiverton Prevention Coalition, we had our last meeting at Sandywood Farms because we're trying to bring the community in, as you all know. So, instead of having it here, we had it there. And the chiefs were there, the Portsmouth Police Chief and Chief Lakey was at our last meeting. And that's important to have them there because they bring the reality into the situation. We have all our policies and all our grand ideas and they tell us how things really are in the both towns, which is very important and powerful. And also the clergy was there. The faith-based community, as we all know, does a lot working with substance abuse and the homeless and things like that. So, the faith-based community ministers were there after we had the breakfast with them. They've been coming to our meetings. So, I think that's really good that we're all doing that together. So, that's what we're doing at the Prevention Coalition and we'll continue with our outreach to the community. Calendar, Mr. Eric?
Yes, the first item for consideration is the calendar. It's that time of year where we look forward to schedule our meetings. On the document that we sent you for consideration, we've historically have met at 7:00 PM for a long time and I just kept it that way. I didn't know if members would like to meet, you know, a half hour earlier as opposed to the seven o'clock start. It's entirely up to the, I just put it out there, possible change. If not, we keep it at seven.
How do the members feel?
I guess the only, my only comment would be, I think the public is sort of used to coming to meetings at seven because most meetings will begin at seven. But, I mean, they certainly would, if we change it, they'll get used to the change. Because the town council's at seven, planning board's at seven, you know, a lot of them at seven, but...
And I do think for members of the public who have to get home from their jobs and try to eat, that seven is more convenient, more conducive to greater participation.
Seven o'clock, then, we keep it as is.
Okay.
And then we have the, where we have the meeting in July with, it's off, the second meeting in July and the second...
Depending on how everything goes in May, for our budget, usually determines the second meeting in June, whether or not we have it, and also in August. So, we schedule them now and then if we don't need them, we try to make note of that ahead of time so people can plan accordingly.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2013 School Committee Calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
And I'd just like to say, for the benefit of people at home who may not have attended meetings in the past, our meetings are scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. We meet at the Tiverton High School Library at 7:00 PM. This year's schedule will be posted both on our website and with the Secretary of State for January. But there are occasionally changes. We may drop or add a meeting and those changes are also available on the Secretary of State's website and on the school's website. So, please join us.
Okay, thank you. Portuguese Language Club proposal?
This is a proposal that I'm recommending to the committee. Comes from Mr. Soares, who's the Department Head of World Language at the high school, along with Francis Mello. Mrs. Mello's also a Portuguese teacher at the high school. They would like to start a Portuguese Language Club. And you can see, you know, with the write-up that Dennis provided us, what they would like to do. And I think it would be a great idea to start one, something that we don't currently have at the high school. And Mr. Soares is here if you have any questions regarding, and he and Mrs. Mello are volunteering their time to run the club.
It's basically based on student interest that helps students to be interested in the club as well. It's just basically to show students that it's marked to Portuguese other than what goes on in the classroom. Trying to get students more involved. We have the EEP this year for the first year where students are getting four Rowland College credits. We're working on taking students to Portugal in 2014 again because we just went last year. So, just trying to, for students not to try to explore their cultural background other than being in the classroom. It's based on student interest as well. Just, you know, and also for students to have fun.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, I think I'm a positive role model, but try to be.
Right, but that's a good idea.
And Mrs. Mello is a colleague of mine who has also agreed to co-advice the club as well. And I think we'll do a good job based on, you know, student interest and hopefully we get decent amount of students. And it's not just opening up for students who take Portuguese, could be anybody, even staff, so.
I want to just tell you, I think this is a wonderful idea. Rhode Island and southeastern Massachusetts are really unique in terms of the cultural resources we have available that are related to Portuguese culture and Portuguese immigration. I know both Brown and UMass Dartmouth have college-level programs in Portuguese. That is also unusual and unique to our area. So, it's a great idea to take advantage of these offerings. And as you said, the interest is there. It's a heritage language for many of our families. So, I wish you much luck.
Thank you. I'm also working with Rowland College too because they're also going in the process of passing a Portuguese club within their Board of Governors and hopefully coordinating something where those college students can come here and tutor our students as community service as well. That's just the idea, that's not set in stone. That's a, doesn't cost anything to dream type of an idea.
Yeah, that's right.
So, she came to visit my, the college classroom to see how it was going and speak to the kids. She had nothing but good things to say. She's very impressed by some of the language abilities of the seniors and there are a couple of them are going to continue on, use those credits they're getting this year within Rowland College. And that's the purpose of the whole program, is to try to help these students continue on, not just stop.
Yeah.
So, in knowing a second language is going to put them when they apply for a job over...
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely.
That'll be such an asset.
Just trying to get them on that, set them in the right direction, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the Portuguese...
Excuse me, just, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the Portuguese Language Club?
And second. And I'd just like to know if any of the students would like to speak? Would you like to talk about it?
Nathan, you don't want to talk?
Come on, Nathan. I haven't, I can't believe that.
Well, yeah, I definitely want to thank you guys for accepting it because I absolutely, of course I love my American English club. And we all know Tiverton is full of Portuguese background. And I think it'd be good for some of the students who are Portuguese and don't know a lot about it to get a better idea other than just learning how to write and how to say, more learn the culture background on it. I think, to me, that's more important than... 100% behind him on this one.
Well, I could have used your help, Mr. Soares. When I, when my son was in the middle school, they had to do their projects and they pick out of the hat and you get a lady of fame, all these really easy things. And he got oxen cots. And I'm like, oxen cots? You know, what are we going to do? So, we got an Ninja Turtle thing and we fixed that up to look like a nice oxen cot. Then I couldn't find anything at the Tiverton Library on oxen cots. So, we went to Fall River Library. So, I was sitting there with him and I, we went and asked the person to help us get all the books. They got huge books and we went and we sat down at the table. And I opened the book, I said, "This isn't going to work out." He said, "Why?" I said, "'Cause they're in Portuguese." So, that would be really valuable if we all knew a little more of that. So, I think, so do I have a vote on that?
Nope, we have a motion and a second. We didn't vote.
All in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Soares.
Thank you very much. Purchase of computers for middle and high school, Mr. Eric?
Yes, in the backup document that I provided the committee, for the four of you who were part of the budget process last year, I know Jerry's new to it, we had put in the budget, we had requested 50 new computers for both the middle school and the high school as part of our 2012-13 budget request. But unfortunately, due to the, our budget uncertainty at the time regarding our surplus with the town, we had to reduce our budget request, take a few items out. Among those items were the computers. I'm requesting that we purchase, start beginning the purchase of the computers now so that we'll have enough computers. The goal is so that every grade, that is grade five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, as well as grades three and four, can take the park assessments in 2014, 2015. And that's the best guidance that we have from RIDE right now, that the entire new assessment program will be online. And they expect that schools to have, students take it all at once by grade. So, based on our numbers, we're projecting that we need 150 computers, workstations at the middle school, 150 at the high school, and we need to purchase another 75 computers for our three elementary schools. Purchasing them all at once would be taxing, to say the least. By purchasing them, by using our surplus, which we currently have approximately $535,000 in our surplus, I believe it's money well spent. It goes towards a, really our top priority as far as the next year or two, as far as capital projects that we need to invest money into.
I know the RIDE had talked about perhaps doing something collaboratively to purchase these computers. Did they ever do anything with that? No?
Al serves on the statewide committee, a couple of them actually. And there's been conversation about the $20 million bond that RIDE received, but that's simply for internet Wi-Fi access.
Okay.
But there's been no group purchasing or, we buy these off the group list, the state list.
I think that may be the collaborative portion of it where Al may go to the state bid list to see what the pool's bid price is.
So, that's what we'll do with these, is we just go, there's a state bid list?
This is off of the, it's called the RISD Consortium.
Oh, okay.
So, they have a consortium. And this was actually the facilitator, it was the Northern Rhode Island Collaborator, they bidded this out.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And this is based on, and they bid this out specifically, I believe, in anticipation of the upcoming interim assessments and the park assessment.
So, we don't have to advertise a bid for a bid for this because we're going to the bid?
It's basically already been...
It's already been bid. And if you don't, you can also waive the bid process if it's sole source.
Okay.
If it's the only company that can do the work for you, or it's an emergency where, you know, if your roof collapsed...
But where this is, we're getting it from the state bid list, it's already been bid.
That's correct.
Doc, I believe, is acquiring off of this.
And of course, the additional computers or the labs will be used, just not for the testing, but, you know, throughout the school year. So, it'll allow teachers more access to bring their kids in to work with technology in their classes.
And the $535 includes this fiscal, fiscal year 12, Doc?
Yes, it includes an estimate of our financial results through June of 2012. We've actually completed the audit since that estimate was made and I'm confident that that number, it may even be...
So, that is on top of the $400,000 that we set aside and restricted to the DM?
Yes, the $400,000, that's separate.
A lot's changed since a year ago. Basically, a year ago, we had a $225,000 balance, but since then, we've had our funds returned.
Restored, yeah.
We've completed another year, so there's numerous pieces of data that have led to where we are financially. But I'm comfortable that we do have sufficient funds, especially for a one-time capital expenditure like this, that won't affect our budget going forward.
And when we bring the budget before the committee early next month, you're going to see the computers, the additional computers will be there in the initial budget phase. So, our increase will be high. My question and direction from the committee at that point will be, do you want to use more of the surplus at that time to purchase additional capital items so that we don't have to put them in the budget, so that we can use our surplus for one-time expenses? If you use your surplus, some people say, "Well, just put it towards your operational expenses." Well, if you do that, that's, it works for a year because you reduce, you know, accounts A, B, and C, and D.
But then it's built into your budget.
But then next year, you got to make up that money that you use to offset. So, using surpluses for one-time purchases really is the way we've done it, the few times we've been able to do it. I've talked to Chris Cott in the past. Chris is, you know, favors that as well. If you're going to use your surplus, use it for one-time expenses so it's not reoccurring, so.
What about sewage?
The sewage is, again, we still have the $400,000. We escrowed that several months ago. That's still there and we have an update for you later.
And that's not in the $535.
That's not part of the $535.
That's not to be touched.
When our financial statements are issued, we'll have a reserve balance now for the wastewater treatment vote that the committee took.
Good.
There was something messed up here with the math.
What math do you have?
That's why we need computers. Twenty, eight student PCs, one teacher PC, quantity 55.
Hold on.
Twenty-five student PCs, one teacher PC, 52.
Oh, those are, those are additional, I apologize, I ran out of room on the way the spacing worked on it. You should see a second line below that, that the additional PCs on the map for the 55 supplement at the high school for the, what do we call it, the CAD lab upstairs, it has, I think it's 24 computers, I'm sorry, 22 computers.
That's right, he changed it.
To be able to do a full class. So, it's just the way the spacing worked in the Excel spreadsheet, it didn't, it's supposed to wrap around, but the additional PCs are to go for that lab, so it brings up to a full-capacity lab. Because the whole premise behind purchasing these additional PCs...
That's correct.
Is to allow for full classes to go in there and take the assessment at the same time. You can't have 25 students in a class and only 20 computers. You have five that get bumped out and becomes an issue of supervision in terms of taking the online assessment. So, that's where it's reflected. But the 28 student PCs and the one teacher PC are for the actual brand-new labs we're going to establish.
And then the 26 is for the CAD lab?
And then the, yeah, the additional PCs, there's difference between them, yeah, it's going to go for the CAD lab there and the same thing at the middle school. I believe there's a couple of machines here that need to supplement on.
So, basically, the main, there's nothing wrong with having computers in the schools, but the main reason for this is the testing, correct?
Well, we needed, we need to, if it wasn't the testing, I'll answer it this way, if it wasn't for the testing, this would upgrade what we, what we need.
The number wouldn't be as large.
The number wouldn't be as big. But because RIDE is saying, "You got to test a grade all at once," we simply don't have the capacity. And I don't know of any district that does, you know, have the capacity right now that they can just say, you know, if you have 200 kids, you know, per grade in every high school, if you have an 800-student high school, that means you have to have 200 computers, you know, up, you know, up and running.
Oh, how many do we have now?
Leave that there.
Computer?
Do labs, it's probably easier.
Just computers total, we have a little under a thousand, about 1,000 computers.
So, here we are adding...
Are we adding or are we replacing some?
These are in addition to what we have now.
Okay. So, in addition to what we have, how many more are we going to have?
In addition, we're going to have approximately 1,100 computers.
No, I understand now, but what will be the maximum we will need, what will be the minimum we need to satisfy this testing?
Two hundred more.
Approximately another 200.
On top of that?
Yes.
So, we'll have 1,300?
Approximately, yes. Because some of the old ones are, a couple of the labs are older, but they're new within some of the teacher computers, so we're going to have to cycle some things through. So, it's not, it's not just the, we're just buying 25 new computers. I mean, some of them are going to get cycled through to the classrooms, replace teacher computers. Some of them are just obsolete and they're not going to run the assessments.
And we also, and we also don't have, they're not modern, they're not as new as what we need for the capacity for this testing as well. And we need the labs so the kids can go in one place to take the test. We can't have them in eight different rooms or different sites. We need them so we can monitor them and they can go online.
How many are in a lab?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, 26?
That's, we're shooting for 25.
We have some that have less. Some of the state in preparation of this online assessment practice...
And how many labs do we have?
They've asked, they, I just completed the survey, they asked how many labs we have, how many computers, how many...
How many labs do we have is the question.
And how many labs do we have?
Oh, we have, at the high school here right now, we have, let me see, four. They're not, like I said, we have to supplement a few of them.
Right, right.
We have two at the middle school, but both of them need to be, which you'll see down below in the second paragraph from Mr. Eric's memo, are going to need to be replaced. The elementary schools currently have no static labs, meaning they're in actual lab classrooms.
They just have the laptops.
We have two laptop labs per elementary school and those laptops are four years old, so they're going to need to be looked at in the near future.
Do we have the physical rooms available to serve as...
The high school, middle school?
To serve its computer labs? Are those rooms now empty?
Um, one, well...
And they have the wiring, they have the...
No, that's why you have the wiring and the cost.
So, we have to add the outlets?
That's in the cost.
And how about ceiling-mounted LCD projector and the...
That's all in the, that's in the sheet.
I put two in for there and I put two in for the middle school, so the two additional labs, these are, this part here, aside from supplementing a couple of labs to bring up to 25, basically provides us with two additional labs in each, the high school and the middle school.
And at the...
Complete with a instructor workstation, a mounted LCD projector and screen that includes the wiring, the electricity, as well as the data wire.
And at the elementary schools, will we also have a lab?
Yes.
For them?
Yes.
Will we have the room?
Not for this particular piece, but later.
We need to create, we need to create a lab and they'll use the library.
So, they'll have 25 in each school?
Right, because right now is, we don't, we, what we're running into is a problem with our Wi-Fi for inconsistent connection. It goes, it shuts itself down. So, while they're taking the test, we got to make sure that there's going to be no interruption. And Al recommends the best way to alleviate that is we go with the hard, what I call the hard wire that we're recommending here so that we, you know, unless something goes wrong with a bigger problem, it won't be because the Wi-Fi cut out on it.
The Wi-Fi, the state passed upon, the general city passed upon for the $20 million Wi-Fi project, put wireless access points in every classroom in the state. However, the projected end time for that project is 2015. They're in the process right now of putting out an RFP for specific vendors. And once that completes, they're going to have to do site surveys and then go forward in terms of the installation of that project. So, in the meantime, because the, we are already doing the assessments now, we've done round one and experienced issues that we have in terms of, it eats up quite a bit of instructional time. The principals can certainly speak to the fact that doing that, that first round takes up quite a bit of instructional time because we don't have the capacity. This is the most immediate fix. I mean, I would say a few years out from now, we could talk about maybe doing something more along the wireless route, but we're just not at that point. And it would be, I wouldn't recommend us invest in any type of wireless because the state has already made that.
It's a huge cost, basically. I cannot imagine using all these labs in instruction.
Yeah. That is a big cost. That's like, yeah.
Because this is, you don't want to have students at computers when you're instructing, unless this is something which is truly a lab experience or they're supposed to be engaged and work with computers because how do you tell them not to use the cellphones? What about trying to browse through Internet? So, in terms of, we have to do this, but we have to be honest, that basically the testing is the main reason why we have to...
This is an unfunded mandate. I remember, we were at a meeting with Mrs. Black, maybe two years ago, Al was there. We talked to the, I talked to the commissioner directly. I said, I said, "We're really concerned about infrastructure and having the ability, you know, to do what was being talked about two years ago." Well, now it's two years later, the park assessments are coming, and unless RIDE changes their minds in a relatively short period of time as far as how they want districts to deliver the test or administer this assessment. Because districts are like us, with their planning, okay, what do we have to do to be able to provide this assessment, you know, these assessments? And they're making investments now. So, if RIDE's going to change...
I would think they're going to have to make accommodations because I would think we're the rule, not the exception, that most districts don't have six labs, so eight, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 labs with 25 computers in them. I would think we're the rule, not the exception.
We're creating, the goal would be to have six each.
Right.
Short of having a surefire workaround...
I mean, you think about Central Falls, East Providence, I mean, Warwick, they're not going to, I mean, to spend this kind of money on infrastructure, they're running deficits as it is. I would think they're going to have to have some sort of modification to the testing.
What is the total number per grade? How many seats do we need?
Approximately 150.
For 150 per grade?
That's a, that's a, that's a solid average.
What's wrong with taking students on the bus to the elementary school and using the lab over there for testing?
I think it's going to impact your instructional, I think it's going to impact instructional...
But it's only a day. I mean, how long in the first time?
It can be more than a day.
You only have...
I understand, but if you, you might have some extra capacity, but not...
But the kids have to take the test too. The elementary kids.
Right, but you do it on different days.
But RIDE, but you have grades three and four taking the test. And you have only, they usually give you maybe a two-week window tops, you know, to give the assessment. So, you got to give the assessment in math and ELA to grades three and four in each subject area. Those assessments take approximately, currently right now, what do they take, 10 hours? Eight to 10 hours, elementary principals, anybody, to administer? And that's the paper test. So, it's going to, we assume the park assessments will be the same. I'm not even sure if the smaller workstations at the elementary are even feasible for the high school kids, because the only computers that they have, they have 25 each at their elementary libraries. That'd be the only place where you could go to use them.
Well, what about vice versa? You bring the elementary kids up to the middle school or the high school and take their tests?
I don't think it's feasible to have little nine and 10-year-olds, I mean, their furniture's different.
If I could just add another thought to this conversation, with the new Common Core state standards, there's a lot more reference to students using technology for learning within ELA and math on a regular basis. And they can't just show up for an assessment not having had that experience on a routine basis. Within the math standards, there's reference to geometry software that students need to have experience with. So, there are a lot of other reasons why we would want to be integrating technology instruction throughout and not just...
But, but now you're having the math classes go to the labs, you're having English go to the labs, you're having, that's how you're.
Which they, they do that now. I observed a science lesson here in the lab, so the teachers are using the labs quite a bit.
But there's nothing wrong with having labs and we should have them.
Right. It's how many?
It looks like we have to, because I was, I just heard that if this was not for the testing, this request, which is in front of us, this would be it. But we have to ask for additional 200 computers, and this will be exclusively to accommodate the testing. The question is, can we, within the resources which can be effectively used in context of instruction, because that's what, what, why we are here for, could we also execute the testing? Was being a little bit more creative. So it means, okay, taking, and there's no problem, the, we take the band to middle school for a concert, so it's no big deal. So you can take particular grade, couple of buses, bring them over there, they do their testing, come back.
And I'm, a couple of things. One, I think the first part is, is the request. Because as I said, we need to do that anyway, in my opinion, to upgrade what I'm requesting in this first, what you have before you. We certainly can go back and look at, if that was approved, if not, then we have to go back anyway, to look at, is there any other way to, to figure this out? Now, well, the one concern I have is, and we can look at moving kids on buses and things like that, is optimum test-taking situation. Getting kids up on a bu-, and maybe the older kids would be able to do it if you move the high school kids. But I'm not so sure about moving, I remember my middle school days teaching, moving fifth, sixth, and seventh to eighth graders on a bus, just even 15 minutes, get them settled, to take, you know, and then say, okay, now you've got to take this assessment, which everything is riding on these assessments, more so than ever before. I'm not, I mean, we'll, we can have that conversation later, but I would be concerned about that. I'm not saying we can't do it or we wouldn't be forced to do it, I'm just saying it's not necessarily an optimal situation.
These computers come bare, am I right? No software on those?
We own the, we have the licenses.
We have the Microsoft licensing.
How much are the extra licenses going to cost for 100 computers?
It's going to cost us anything. It's the Microsoft licensing, which allows us.
Now, currently, it's you and one more person, am I right, who maintains 1,000 computers, correct?
Yes.
What about you and another person maintaining 1,300 computers?
That's, you're looking into my budget proposal for 2013, 14.
Well, that's what we are talking about. So what, two people.
There would be a cost, $22,000 to handle the new computers.
Just a second, let me finish. Two, two people maintaining 1,000 computers. Yes, we, some of them will be replaced, we will remove some garbage, some of them will be better, so it's, that's, you spend probably most of your time on those 50 computers who are, which are very old. And so this might be manageable. Now, if we start adding things for the, because of testing, this 200 extra computers, you're already saying, there will be additional question for more money to, to maintain this.
That's correct.
Per year. So this is one-time expense of $200,000, which is coming in front of us. Now, these computers will age like everything else, so they will be subject to being upgraded. And $20,000 extra to maintain them. So when you look at this, it's, and this is exclusively for testing, I think it's extremely important that you explore the ideas of how we would execute, how many labs we need per school. Obviously, we are not going to ship kids from elementary school for specific science lesson because the only lab which is available is in the high school. We are not talking about this. So we have to have sufficient capacity within schools that, that instruction can be delivered, normal instruction. But the testing, well, it happens once in a while, it's a little inconvenience for everyone, and yes, you might be scheduled to have it somewhere else.
Well, the, the testing is going to occur more and more frequently.
Right.
If you're, if you're focusing just on the park assessment.
How frequently?
You have, you have four major online assessments that are dictated by the state.
Okay.
You have three interim assessments that we've already started the process on, which is why we discovered we need the additional capacity. You have the fourth being the park assessment. Within that, you also have the local assessments, which Danny can speak to, we can create a detail in terms of Eames Web.
Maybe we have too many assessments.
I don't want to, I don't want to extend this. What I would like to see, and I don't know what everyone else wants to see, but I would like to see basically a presentation about all the assessment aspect of what kind of assessment has to be done. We hear about this in Pismio. What kind of assessments have to be done, for which grades, how frequently, are some of these assessments going away or all of them? Are there new assessments coming in? Who takes them? Basically, to look at that piece about assessments in context of even talking about the budget item of additional 200 computers and additional money to maintain them, which is money spent to accommodate this assessment.
Yeah, I think what you're seeing, Jan, is we're going to spend $220,000 that we could be spending on another program, another, right? For, for a test.
Correct. And, and these labs will stay empty because we have, if you have, if you have four labs per school, and if you can prove to me that all four of them will be utilized to full capacity to deliver instruction, that's.
Well, we have four now, we have four at the high school.
Well, but you wanted to add two.
Right. Well, not with this, this would just be to upgrade.
I understand, but with assessment.
Yes, we do.
Can I say that the four that we have now, are involved in day-to-day instruction? They are, they are.
To use daily.
We have, we have the computer, we have the accounting lab, we have the graphics arts lab, we have the library lab here that's constantly utilized for librarian and co-teaching collaborative instruction. And our 210 collabor-, computer lab is used to support the senior project, research and paper due. So those are four active daily labs that we could not do without. And if the computers go down, then we need to, we would need to make a decision to replace or upgrade. So yes, 50 additional will take care of our existing 90 to 100 computers that are used every day.
Sure.
On a weekly basis. And then the extra 50 would hopefully be sufficient capacity to take care of the, the three times interim assessments and then the end-of-the-year park assessment. That's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, whole school and middle school as well. What we have right now is so old, constantly fixing them and troubleshooting. We have just one lab that recycle a lot of classes through. The second lab is actually for instruction, direct instruction in a cooperative class for all students. And then we have a laptop lab that everyone is fighting over on a daily basis. So we are desperate for an instructional lab for some blended, blended learning models on top of the assessments that we have to deliver now via computers.
So I think, like what, like you said, then let's, let's have a presentation where we talk about, because it sounds to me it's not going to be just.
No.
No. Testing labs.
Not.
No, be more than that.
So if we could see something from perhaps the principals to show, look, this is what we really think we need now, even if we didn't have the testing. This is what we need to have replaced.
Can I just clarify some of the issues here for my.
Sure. So, so the surplus right now is a holdover from FY12.
And previous, right.
It actually represents a cumulative.
It's a cumulative, but that's correct.
It's not because we weren't in session in July and August and didn't have any expenses and therefore.
Historically, it's, it's pretty high right now because of the unusual circumstance we have, our funds not being available to us and then they became available during the year.
Okay, so it's not like this is money that will, we anticipate, or obviously if you anticipated it. It's not like money we're going to suddenly have a bill in April that, oh yeah, maybe we shouldn't have.
The auditor, we, we've been very conservative. Our normal processes will wait for the audit to certify what our balance is, and that, those are basically uncommitted funds.
Okay, all right. So from what I'm understanding, if there is no park, if there were no assessments whatsoever, the 100 computers you're requesting right now would really be just to improve the instructional infrastructure of all the schools.
That's correct.
So that we would be looking at this expense if park was not there.
That's correct.
But because park is coming, as an unfunded mandate, we're going to.
In the bu-, in my budget proposal.
In your budget, you're going to be asking for another 200?
You'll see, that's correct. Well, how do we deal with it? Yes.
Yes.
200 total.
So we have a problem of, of a need of another 200 computers in order to.
Based on our internal discussions, yes.
Okay. And has the state in any way responded to the fact that this infrastructure doesn't exist probably for most school systems?
They acknowledge it, but they don't. They acknowledge it, they say, we understand that it's going to put a strain on, on, on local districts. That's essentially the, the party line they get, they give us.
They requested a survey which was completed on Friday, was due on Friday, which we discussed briefly today, was at the meeting today with the state. And they're going to compile all the data to look at the facilities of each building and, and what hardware each building and the capacity. It was very specific and targeted to exactly what we're discussing now. And from the feedback I've gotten from some of my fellow tech directors is, rather than look at what you alluded to earlier, which is what the state put out, that RFP, what they call a golden laptop, is most districts have found, which I agree with, that we're not ready to do anything at large scale with any type of laptops. I mean, if you look at it from a logical standpoint, the state's going to invest $20 million to put wireless in every classroom. Wireless generally does not go along with static labs. And then they bid an RFP to buy a quote-unquote golden laptop. So I think their solution, or what they're pushing towards, is a much more expensive proposition.
Absolutely.
Than what this solution would be. Without spelling it out, I, I'm going to say publicly, is I think they're pushing to some type of laptop carts, one-to-one.
One-to-one initiative, they call it.
Which I've worked with in the past. I, we did a lot of studies with Maine and the prior district I worked for. And from what you're discussing, and how, Jan, you were talking about, in terms of supporting this, if, if you're saying this is going to be tough to support, I can tell you based on what the state and the direction they're pushing us, or what they're setting up, the steps they're setting up, would be some type of a laptop initiative, whether it's one-to-one or on carts, and that would be quite a bit more labor-intensive and expensive, and it comes with a whole other host of issues and problems.
And probably far in the future.
Well, in two years, the wireless is going to be done, and they've already bid out the, the quote-unquote magic laptop or golden laptop, whatever they're calling it. It's a matter of what districts are going to bite on that. And my colleagues, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
My, my colleagues that I've spoken with much rather would go to either a desktop or a thin client, which is what I said earlier. This particular proposal figures off of, I believe it was Pawtucket. I know when Socket was looking at, they're just going to put additional labs into their buildings. And speaking to what Laurie said earlier, if you look at the middle school population of approximately a little under 600, you've only have two labs, one of which is an instructional lab, which instructions going on.
Mr. Zaro uses daily.
Throughout almost the entire day. And so you hit over Mr. Zaro and his class, the eighth grade assessment, which we are very successful. We score online, I think, close to, I think we score on the top 10% of the state for that assessment. So that really means there is only one lab and some old, about six-year-old laptops that the rest of the remaining teachers, faculty in that building, have as an accessible tool to provide any type of instruction with regard to technology. And the lab, the static lab that's at the middle school, and again, that's not, we're not replacing it, we were going to add two additional labs, that lab is about nine years old, and it takes about 20 minutes for computers to boot up and actually get to where they need to be. So you can imagine the frustration of a teacher who wants to sign it off for a 45, 50-minute period, when they get in there and the computers are off first thing.
But at some level, we're addressing that with the current proposal for 100 computers.
Correct. So what would happen with the.
But, but what we've opened up is this whole other question, which I think is. So what I'm, from what I'm hearing, our greatest concern is really having to institute the park assessments before the state is going to come in with this bigger plan of.
We've needed, we've needed additional computers for quite some time, because we have not been able to.
To replace and or upgrade them.
Acquire those computers in the last, well, I've been here, I'll be here four years in January, and I've advocated, advocated quite often. I'd asked for, we need additional labs at the middle school for the reason I just laid out. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to acquire them due to funding. So I think part of the discussion tonight, certainly the, the impetus for all this has been the park assessment and hearing about all these online assessments, but if you were to take all the assessments away, I would say we still need to buy additional labs at the middle school. I'm not, we'd still need two there. I would say the high school, maybe we could do with one less if you're not going to take assessments in.
And I think that was Mr. Vergandhi's point, is we understand we need the 100, but perhaps during budget season, we need to, okay, now you have the 100, tell us where you have labs. Tell us where your need still is, and kind of tell us with, not even thinking about the park. And let's deal with what we need, and then once we figure that out, will that.
Well, I also think it's important to hear from the state what the results of this survey are and what their response is to it. Because I don't think they, you know, we're, we're just one school district. I don't think they can just lay this all out there and not have an open rebellion on their hands of people.
All of, all of the race.
We still write the checks, so.
The vast majority of the race to the top funding, just for folks that may be watching, Ride has no capacity to raise money. It's all part of the general assembly. So it's up, it's the general assembly's yea or nay if they're going to give Ride additional funds. Our funding formula is stagnant. In other words, it's a set pool of money that for the next 10, or actually seven years now, will be divvied up among the districts with a very convoluted formula. So there's no real extra money in, in the funding formula unless it gets passed by the general assembly like it did last year. So while Ride has all, I believe, good intentions, and I believe they hear the districts, but they don't have the capacity to respond quickly at all. And if, their, their best thinking at the time, and it is, to go to a laptop one-on-one initiative versus, you know, what we're, what districts like ours probably will creep towards somehow, some way. And if they still continue with, we want these kids to take it all at the same time, and it's got to be online. I, I mean, something, I agree, something will have to give at some point. But this aside, this request aside, we're going to have to wrestle with, now, we may want to, our best thinking may come to sit tight on the surplus, hold on the computers and, and give Ride more time. That may be our best.
I can imagine Ride being in a position where they say, oh, we can't really mandate this because we can't get the money out of the general assembly, nor can we just say all these districts are now going to find money in their budget. Because that's, that's another, you know, it's a tax, so that's, they don't have the power to.
Can we just approach it of what is our need? Forget about park, what is our need? Because I'm hearing all of you guys say, we need computers. So can we maybe approach it like Mr. Vergandhi said? Let's, let's look at what we really need from an instructional standpoint and kind of weigh on the park.
We'll have the rationale when we do the budget rollout, we'll do the numbers, and then we'll do a, a specific breakout of the computer issue or the technology issue, more so than what we normally do.
Maybe some other district will take on Ride and we can just sort of sit back and watch.
We've done that before, but we'll brief you on that.
Maybe we could do it. Mr. Larkin, maybe we could do it.
Let others lead and we'll follow.
We really should have a line item in our budget for replenishing the obsolete computers. The reason we haven't needed that the last few years is when the elementary school was open, they received new computers, middle school and high school got the best of the rest.
And I think what gets lost at the beginning, as we, as I mentioned, was that our surplus was in flux for two years.
Yes, it was.
So now, this is a good, this request, I believe, is a good request, because we never really had that opportunity.
That was like the 300-plus that was tied up in legislation.
Yeah, so that was, you know, so that tied us up for a couple of years. And we would have made this request outside of park, and we made it last year.
That seems perfectly reasonable, and it sounds like this is an instructional need that we can address, but perhaps.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. We have to.
I like the idea of, you know, how can it be created if we need, we need 200, maybe we, maybe we can get 150.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a lot of the conversations.
Yeah, and I, I like the idea of just focusing on, instructurally, what, what do you need in your buildings? And then if, kind of figure out, once we have that, will that satisfy park?
And just, just for a minute, I'll speak about the unfunded mandates that we've talked about for eight years since I've been here and longer than that. But there's 23 from the state, around 367 every year.
Probably more than that now.
There were 23.
Dollar-wise, I mean.
And now, there's 400 pages from the federal government, 500 pages. We don't get money for that. They cut it every year. So just to think they don't care about, they don't care about the money, they just keep sending them to us. And I was at the meeting, as Mr. Eric said, when he brought that up, it was a very unpopular statement. Everybody went, huh, how dare you ask? So we already did start the revolt a long time ago.
That's why we're on the list.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, we do.
Please certainly do.
I'll move approval of 100 computers at a cost of 78, 970.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add for the future about this discussion, I, I personally would like to see more detail instead of just saying, well, we are using these labs for that class. class." Or, how many hours, how many students are using it, what kind of instruction is happening as opposed to, "Well, teachers are using it for social sciences class."
No, we can provide that.
You have lab signup sheets, right, for every lab, so...
We can tell you who, lots of times, they're already pre-scheduled.
How many, how many periods per day?
Like at the high school, the students, the classes are there, I mean, they're assigned there.
I can provide you the maintenance schedules, so give you an idea.
We can do that for you, that's not a problem.
That's a huge investment, and we will be...
Yeah, and it helps the public to see that.
Correct, because we will be, we will be questioned, "Well, how did you approve 300 computers, and this was a surplus, we told you, you are going to spend everything?" I'm just trying to prevent this avalanche which is coming in our direction, that we are using our resources wisely, and it's not overall indulging here.
Absolutely.
In January, we need to re, we need to stop here to revise our technology plan and submit it to RIDE by June, so actually, we have to start in January, it needs to be submitted, and then, I believe, by April.
And thank you, Al, for everything you're doing.
I have to think that Rhode Island is not alone with this problem. Any of the states that have signed up for the park assessments, every district must be struggling with the same problem, so if we delay, maybe there will be a group solution found, or the states will get together and revise the requirements, because it's hard to imagine that every district in every state that will be giving park assessments will be able to invest in this infrastructure.
Fortunately, Mrs. Black, they don't ask what our unfunded mandates are anymore. I think the last sheet I sent to them, we had about $350,000 of unfunded mandates.
And RIDE stopped asking for that.
Yeah, but we'll still send it.
Well, it's more than that, that was a couple of years ago, so, you can just...
We'll still send it, though, because they, last time somebody said, "Well, we don't get..."
You can prepare it for us, that's right.
Mr. Fiore, that would be nice.
We like to have that in our binder, thank you. RFP for the high school seats?
Again, not to beat a dead horse, again, this item was also in the budget that we had to take out. Mr. Vezette's done a lot of legwork, working with the company, that we talked to last year, they were nice enough to send us an estimate to replace the 46 damaged seats and replace all the other seats, for a total of 696 seats, the estimate we received was for $51,000. Last year, I believe, the budget we had was $46,000 and change, so what we had asked for last year but was taken out. So the cost has gone up about $5,000, but since this is an item that's not on a state bid list or anything, if the committee was willing to expend the, you know, knowing that it's gonna be in that ballpark, and it doesn't cost anything except to advertise for the RFP, would be to send out an RFP to have those seats replaced. And for those of us that were there just the other night for the Sakonit Bridge toll meeting, you know, people couldn't, I mean, if you've been there, you know how bad the situation is. Go for any func...
Told them.
We could have a toll, that's right.
But, so, the damaged seats, we have seats that are actually missing.
Forty-six.
And so there's no metal frame on it.
Right. That's to replace them.
No, no, the frame was...
No, it's all gone.
Right. So they will be, those are new seats. Now, for the seats that still have their metal sort of structure, will they be getting new padding and upholstery?
Padding and upholstery, about $70 per unit.
But the frame stays the same.
But the metal frame, we can keep on the...
Yes, the frame stays the same.
That's the bulk of the estimate.
Right. Well, I think for many residents, attending an event in our high school auditorium may be the only time they use our school facilities. It really is a town resource, and I think it's our responsibility to maintain it and make it safe and enjoyable when the public comes in, or the town residents come in and use it for meetings. So I'm happy to see that we can move on this.
And again...
I think it certainly is one of the few spaces, I think, where we can have this many...
It's the only space in town that you could actually sit somebody...
Sit, and not have to put chairs in.
And not have to put chairs in. And, and again, as Carol mentioned, it is a community building, not only for town meetings, but, and for activities, school-related, but also, you know, DEM has used it, DOT has used it outside, for other meetings. So I think it's a good investment. The seats, for whatever it's worth, are originals, I guess they could go to the Smithsonian. If you ever wanna see what a 47-year-old auditorium seat looks like, feel free to, you know, visit Steve and he'll give anyone a tour.
I don't like Yankee Stadium, so...
Yeah, I don't think there'll be big sellers for, I don't know, they're heavy...
Maybe.
Because they have all the dirt in them, I wouldn't be selling them, we're not taking the liability on that. So can I have a motion to RFP?
I will make a motion to approve that we seek the estimates of the bids on what proposed yet.
Dr. Larkin, and then the fire code compliant, Mr. Eric?
Yes, we also, they will also be treated so they're fire code compliant with Rhode Island's fire codes.
Do I have any...
Because we were cited for that.
Do I have any questions?
Another mandate from the state.
All those in favor? Yay, no seats, then we can decorate the walls.
Let's get the seats first. Let's get the seats.
Will there be any gold in the upholstery?
We'll have a golden seat. Only one, it'll be like Ted Williams' seat out in Center Field at Fenway.
Sally Black.
A Sally Black Memorial's chair.
Do the balcony in gold.
Our next issue...
Waste water treatment?
Yeah, I'll turn it to Doug since he's been in communication with DM directly.
To update the committee with regard to our waste water treatment facility, as we know, the work that had originally been planned for this year, because of the nitrogen limits that the state wanted additional work done, we weren't able to do the work over the summer and be ready for this fall. So because of that, the state requested that we prepare a new timetable for the resolution of this matter. So what I've done is I've put my letter to DEM as the second page in the package, outlining all of these steps that per our engineer, our objectives through, basically, this month through next August, when we hope to complete this project, and I submitted it to DEM, and within two days, they had said that the updated schedule is satisfactory, so they're happy with our timetable, and they're requiring that we continue to update them monthly, as I have been the last couple of years. So, you know, once again, as we update and as we progress, I'll keep the committee informed, and I'm just pleased that they were very agreeable, and we've continued to work closely with them, through ourselves and our engineer.
Thank you for all your work on this, because...
I was just asked by a member of the public to read the revised schedule, the highlights. We're going to obtain DEM approval February 28th. Bid, advertise, and opening will be April 30th, start work June 1st, to be complete by August 15th.
Right, assuming DEM...
Right, assuming DEM approves it.
Finally gives its final, final approval.
On February 28th, that will be the schedule.
And of course, all of these steps are predicated on prior steps, and we need to just keep in contact with DEM if anything falls off schedule.
Again, they've been very good to work with.
Yes, they have, yeah.
So...
Did they move the site?
No, not yet.
Okay. You'll let us know?
We'll let you know.
Well, our engineers, looking at all the options because of the extra tests that are...
And the flow and everything, okay.
...to correct. So as soon as, if the diagram that we originally saw needs to be changed, I'll bring it before the committee.
But as of right now, we're going on, it's gonna be up in the wooded area near the fields.
All right.
Near North Brayton.
Okay, thank you.
We're hoping that the original diagrams and plans are still valid, but we need to have the engineer run some additional tests.
Okay, thank you. A joint budget meeting dates?
It's that time of year where we get together with the budget committee and the town council. You have Mr. Goncalo's letter that he sent to us, actually, an email with dates, they have dates the 9th, the 10th, the 16th, or the 17th. Keep in mind, our first meeting in January is January 8th, for whatever that's worth. And I've talked to Mr. Cotta, Mr. Cotta has received said letter, he has yet to talk to his members yet about, I said, "Do you have a date?", and he said he hadn't talked to them yet, so I said, "We'll work."
So what days of the week are those?
Wednesday, Thursday is...
Wednesday, Thursday.
16, 17 is Wednesday, Thursday.
Now, with the budget, the way we work it, normally, we have a budget workshop because of the way the calendar worked, so we're gonna start right out on the 8th, talking about the budget, you know, we'll try to keep the agenda clear as possible so we can just focus on the budget. Sometimes you, we like to have another meeting right afterwards, so I'm not, basically, I don't know if Wednesday's gonna be the best night for everybody, but if you wanna do back to back.
I think the council's gonna meet right before, too, right before these dates, I think the 7th, they're having a workshop.
Yeah, they meet on the Mondays, so...
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, can we...
If you just give me a date...
Can we give, can we do, say, either the 10th or the 17th, depending upon the budget committee and council's availability?
Sure.
Does that work for Thursdays, work for people?
It's okay, we'll just send an email to Jim and Chris.
That's good.
Either day.
Well, that's what we do, we just pick a day.
And that meeting is here, in the, here in the library, open to the public, so...
And it'll be very lovely with our new skirts.
Yeah, but we'll be fighting, everyone will be fighting over it, 'cause I don't think we have enough skirts to go around.
We'll stretch them.
Also, in that correspondence, the town administrator's looking for our three-year forecast, so with the committee's permission, I will put something together similar to last year and have the committee review it before I send it to the town council and administrator.
And the budget committee will get a copy of that?
Yes.
And also, they sent their numbers along? The town administrator sent them?
Which is kinda, the town's a little different because of revenue streams, you know, we just use the numbers that RIDE gave us, plug it in.
Right.
And we know what the cap is, Doug just does a quick calculation, not that we go to the cap, but...
And just, yeah, I was gonna say, just to clarify, just because we use the cap for our three-year forecast, doesn't mean we're gonna go to the cap.
No, because that's, no, nor have we.
Nor have we, yeah, nor have we, so it's just, that's what we use.
But you can't just pick like 2.4, it's just...
Right.
It really isn't gonna work that way, 'cause you never know what your aid number's gonna be. We don't need a meeting, I'll vote on that.
That's, yeah, that's fine, Doug.
Reports and announcements?
I have none.
I've got a couple of small items.
Anybody?
Technology committee was starting up in January again, for the three-year process. Every three years, we have to write a technology plan to be compliant with federal and state reporting requirements. I believe it's Jan and Deb of the technology committee.
Okay.
No, we only had Jan, Jan was one.
Send me an email.
Jan, we voted Jan in.
Yeah, I remember Jan, I thought we just had Jan.
I think he's the standing member, but, oh, well, it's gonna be that way.
Jan's our official member.
He's the one with the vote.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't remember being on the committee.
I don't remember, well, I know I was.
No, Jan's fine.
Mr. Fiore?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the members of the guidance department, Mr. Phillips from our construction department, as well as some of our students. They've constructed a food pantry at the high school, which will be well-stocked.
There's a nice story on that.
Addressing needs throughout the rest of the year.
What's a nice story in the paper?
Thank you. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you. I handed out to the committee before the meeting started, our year-to-date financials through November, so feel free to look at those numbers and get back to me either at your convenience or at the next meeting. I reviewed the numbers, and I don't see any reason for concern thus far. We're looking on some of the same items we do every year, our sped costs, our heating costs, fortunately, they've been favorable thus far, so I'm confident we're on budget through at least the halfway point. We also wrapped up our audit last week, the last steps where the auditors kind of came in, did all the work, and then came back last week to look at our, some of our federal grants for the single audit, and they looked at our IDEA fund, and I believe Title I, and they've now concluded their work here, so I don't think, there's not gonna be an extension based on anything that we need to work on or provide for them, so I'm happy that's over with. They didn't come up with anything substantial, the numbers we've been using up to this point are pretty much what the auditors confirm, so when the audit comes out, I'll walk the committee through our results for the year and where we stand, but I was pretty pleased with the process, so thank you, everyone that helped on my staff.
What was the surplus, roughly?
Fourth, 2012.
Yeah.
The unofficial number was 435, 971. The reason it was that high, which we normally don't have at one year, is we had two additional sources of revenue. One was the education jobs fund, which was $345,000, and we had early retirement incentive federal money, which was also in our fund for $100,000. So basically, 345 of the 435 was one-time revenue that we received during the year, so we were about, within about $100,000 of our budget excluding those items. So that was a, considering we're, you know, approaching...
Yeah, 'cause it's usually a couple hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was pretty pleased with the results.